...and ask Mr. Weiser to speak to this issue. Have we lost him?
Did you hear that?
No, I did not.
Okay, so the mayor opened the public hearing and asked you to explain this question of the 2.5 mil rate increase in property tax.
Okay, so Ron, I think largely we're gonna revisit what I said from the last hearing, or are you looking for additional information?
I think revisit from the last hearing, and I think the city attorney, after you made your remarks, the city attorney has one or two clarifying questions. If you don't cover those, or maybe you would like to feel more comfortable, and Dirk would ask those questions now, then you can cover those in your remarks.
Yeah, maybe Dirk could ask them, and then I'll try and be efficient that way.
All right. One of the que-- Dee, hopefully you can hear me. One of the questions that was asked during the first hearing was whether or not some of the city's bonding capacity would be restored each year when the contract payment is made to the fire district so that it's, again, slowly restored over an 11-year period back to the $52.4 million level. And I guess that, I don't know that that's something that we have specifically discussed, so if you could, maybe address that question. It might, it might help. I think that's the only question I had, actually, so.
Okay. Well, again, to state through the council and those present, the issue we've run into in thinking about a property tax increase to fund payments under the contract with the fire district is Section 21 of Article 5 of the Charter, which creates a debt limit for any indebtedness that's payable in whole or apart from property taxes for the full faith and credit of the city. And the staff has advised that, given the amount of payments anticipated here, that the city would be at their debt limit, which is measured at the time the contract is entered into, based upon about an 11-year repayment schedule. To answer the city attorney's question specifically, yes, as payments were made against the amounts due under the contract, that would free up additional general obligation bonding capacity as the years went by, as would other growth in assessed value. Ron, I should maybe turn it back to you and see if there are other questions.
DEI, this is Dick White. I have, Chief Doughty has made the suggestion that rather than extend the contract, we simply adjust it to, you know, by increasing the contract by 2.5 mils, which I understand would be about $1.3 million, which would make our annual contributions something in excess of $4 million. And without changing the term of the contract. So for 11 more years, my quick arithmetic is that's ballpark 45, 40, somewhere in $45 million to $50 million. So, at least on paper, we can, we can do that. There's a, there's an opportunity cost to council in terms of our short-term bonding capacity. But as you just explained, if I understood you correctly, we would be recovering that bonding capacity at the rate of about $4 million a year over the term of this contract.
That's all, I agree with everything you just said.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think we are clear on the, you know, how this, the charter constraint plays into this issue of mil levying increase.
Yeah, DEI, actually, I did think of one other sort of sub-question, and I'll, I think this is a clarifying question, but I think we discussed, let's assume for a moment that council agrees to put a question to the voters that would increase the city's payment to the fire district over, let's say, an 11-year period, and that we funded with a 2.5 mil levy increase. We would, it's my understanding, and I think based on our discussions, my understanding is that we would need to put both of those questions to the voters, and most likely, I think we discussed, maybe putting that in one question that would then be contingent on the approval of a similar mil levy increase by the fire district, by their voters outside the city. So, I'm not sure I actually asked a question there, but you can clarify that we would need to submit those two questions, both the increase in payment to the contract, because it was approved prior as a Tabor vote, and the 2.5 mils. And of course, we would have a very short time period to discuss what those mil levy, what those questions would look like. But maybe you could discuss your thoughts on sort of how those would be framed, whether one question or two, and this issue of the contingency. So, I apologize for that long-winded question, but...
So I think, really up to the council, whether it's one question or two, I think legally, the city would be entitled to have it as a combined question. You know, basically, shall the contract be extended, or shall, excuse me, shall the fees payable under the contract be increased? And shall taxes be increased in order to pay that? And so that could be either combined or separated, and you could also make it contingent upon the simultaneous passage of the fire district's mil levy.
That sounds great, in terms of one question, keeping it easy. You know, there's that old expression, "Keep it simple, stupid." So, I, as a voter, what I'm hearing you say is, "I'm voting to increase my mil levy by 2.5, and the term would remain at 11 years to pay for the fire department." Is that close?
That's, that's right. If that's the agreement between the city and the district, that's right.
That was easy. Nothing else has been. Okay.
Not much on your table that is easy, but that's about as easy as me.
Well, I agree, and I certainly would hope that the leadership at the state level would look at Tabor and all of the problems it causes for cities and counties, and somebody step up to the plate, because look at all the brain cells we're killing around here because of Tabor. And I will never stop ranting about Tabor and the destruction it's done to cities and counties. And if I had my way, I'd be up at the legislature, talking to them about it. I don't see any leadership in the state stepping up to the plate to help any of us.
I would, although I feel exactly the way Councilor Marbury does, I don't think Tabor is what's putting us in this situation. We are talking about constraints from the city charter.
Right.
Both about the fact that we had a referendum to adopt this long-term contract, and also, we have a charter limitation on indebtedness. Tabor does lots of things to the, to this situation, but this isn't one of them. So, with that, I think I would, I would like to thank everyone here for being patient with this, and hopefully, you two have been informed by the conversation we've had up to this time. But I would like to invite members of the public to come and speak to this issue.
Do we want to keep Mr. Weiser on the line?
Do we have any further questions of Mr. Weiser? Because he has an obligation to do two minutes.
He has an obligation. I think, I think we've gotten to the heart of the matter as far as the advice from him. And clearly, if we, if we actually go forward with the language where he's back in the loop with staff.
Correct. So Dee, well, thank you for being patient with us and working with us on this short timeline, and we're going to terminate the call.
No problem, thanks.
Thank you again, DEI. And now I will invite members of the public to speak to the potential mil levy increase. Mr. Harper?
Hello, everybody. I'm Al Harper with the Railroad. My wife and I are the owners of the Durango-Silveston Railroad, and the owners of a property that I've heard a lot of talk about today. If I listen to everybody, we'd have a Walgreens with a steam park built over it and a fire department underneath it somehow. Really, though, I, I want to tell you what a great, close relationship I've had with our fire district. The chief has, I think, every other week come by to see me and talk to me about alternatives. And even as we see that some of the sites narrowed down, we're talking about how can we work together? How can we do things together? Obviously, the fire district is very important to the railroad, particularly in, in the valley where we travel. So, we're very good friends. I also have a unique situation where I have a son who is a volunteer fireman. As a result, I have spent time at four different fire stations. I can tell you the one downtown is so outdated and so in need of replacement, where you can't, the fire trucks are so tight that you can't even walk all the way around a fire truck in their garage. It's a deplorable situation of how they have to work. The crew's quarters, the, every facility there at the one downtown does need to be replaced. I've told the chief, and I mean this with all my heart, I'll do everything I can to help support passing this 2.5 mil levy. I'll be glad to speak for him, and I will, if there's a PAC set up, I will financially support the PAC to see that this gets passed. This is a great need for the community. I know the chief will continue to work with me, and we'll solve whatever site ends up being the site, and we'll work together. But I'm 110% behind us, and we'll work with whatever groups want to support the fire district. So I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the possibility of raising the city property tax by 2.5 mils to enable us to make parallel contributions subject to the vote of the DFPD voters? Excuse me for chuckling, Mr. Wheeler.
I apologize again for bothering you. And also, I'm Stilton Wheeler. So, I just have a kind of a question about this proposal for the mil levy. So, what would happen if the fire department mil levy passes, but the city doesn't?
It doesn't happen. That's my understanding from the chief. It won't go. They both have to be passed by the city and the county to make this actually work, because we're all in this together.
So the fire department would not take the 2.5 mils outside of the city?
That's my...
I'll butt in and say, I think that's a fire district question. I don't know that we...
Okay. So it's just something to ponder. I'm just wondering how, some, you know, you've got multiple moving parts.
That's right.
So, scenarios about what some of those parts do and don't do, or pass or don't pass? Is there something to consider?
And, and your question reminds me that I was going to invite the chief back to give the presentation that he had prepared, which I think, we saw it last week, and most, I would guess, most of the people here today and on television probably have not seen it. It gives, to my mind, a very powerful rationale for the need for a 2.5 mil increase in funding for, for the fire district. So if I would, if the chief would come, come back up for his presentation.
Yeah, do that mic, thanks. As I said, if you've got something burning down, I'm your guy. I recognize it right off once you press the screen. Thank you. All right, man. So, thank you once again for inviting me up to speak. My name's Hal Doughty. I'm your fire chief with the Durango Fire Protection District, and contractually obligated with the city of Durango. And as the mayor alluded to, this is a presentation that I showed pretty quickly during last week's presentation. I think there is some stuff of value in here, and I did have the opportunity, and as you've seen my computer prowess, when I say I had the opportunity, it means Mike Krupa and Randy Black had the opportunity to go back and update some slides and some data. And I'd like to also point out that I've got Garrett Sartor here, who is a member of our organization. He's a dedicated volunteer, and I think it's fair to introduce him also as a data geek and is of incredible value in our organization based on the help that he's given us. So, thank you all for your assistance. I actually brought, I was calculating it up earlier. This is the way the fire chief's saying. I think we had about 2,400 pounds of gorilla back in the back couple of rows that came here to listen to the presentation as well. And those, those gorillas back there live at Station 2, River City Hall, for a third of their lives. And they're the ones that are gonna come to your house tonight if you have a situation that you need to dial 911 for, if you have a house fire. If someone that you love has a heart attack or a car accident, these guys will be there tonight to answer that call. So, I love the fact that they're interested enough to be here, and I think that it's wonderful for you guys to get to see the faces of the folks that we're talking about. Our district is 325 square miles, 58 miles long on the north-south axis. We cover this, this community through the heart of La Plata County and the city of Durango with 16 fire stations and 180 wonderful people from this community, most of whom don't even get a paycheck for what they do, that say, they raise their hand, and they say, "I want to be there when someone has their worst day, when an unthinkable event happens to them, when they're dealing with a tragedy in their lives. I want to be the one to make sure that they don't do that alone, that there's help available." So that's, that's what we do. That's, that's what we're contractually obligated, morally and ethically obligated to do for you in the city of Durango. Our revenue stream looks something like this. About three-thirds, about a third comes from ambulance revenue, a third comes from our contract with the city, and a third comes from property tax. There's some adjustments. You'll notice this is marked from the 2016 rolls. City of Durango has increased in value, and actually, you surpassed the value of all the balance of our district for the projected numbers for 2018. So when you see those numbers later, they're based on the projections for what 2018 looks like, and the city's assessed valuation, I believe, goes up to $550 million. This is a graph that I showed you last week. It has been altered, and we altered it based on some of the questions that you had for me. So, again, the red line, that kind of steeply inclining line that you're looking at, is our request for service. And this is the one variable that keeps on impacting us, and we don't have a choice over. Because this is how many times does the phone ring at the 911 center, and somebody starts out that conversation with, "Oh my God, I'm in trouble, I need help." Right? 5,080 times last year, that phone call was made. And 5,080 times last year, my agency answered that call. We answered 5,080 calls, but I represented to you last week that maybe the more important statistic is that the statistic that represents how many times we refuse to go help people. And that statistic was zero. It's a really boring graph, so I didn't include it. But the bottom line is that when you ask, we come. We do whatever we can. And, you know, you think in terms of what the fire department does. We bring in ambulance, we take care of you if you're having a heart attack, we'll do CPR, we'll cut you out of a car that you're trapped in, we'll put out your kitchen if it catches on fire, if I've been cooking. But we do other things too, right? I've been to a swarm of bees in somebody's front yard. I've been to a child that halfway swallowed a bottle cap that was choking, couldn't breathe. Some unthinkable things that you wouldn't, that wouldn't come to your mind when it comes to, "What am I gonna do today when I show up at work?" But that's what we do. We're the stopgap. We answer the call when nobody, when somebody's lost control and nobody knows what to do. And that's what we provide for you in 10. The other thing that we changed on here is the green. And the green is representative of our revenue stream. And the revenue stream is an interesting animal. The previous chart that I showed you showed a representation of what our annual budget was. And what we realized is that that was inclusive of the money we were having to take from savings to put into our operational budget just to be able to continually answer calls every year. And, and it's one of our main objectives with this mil rate increase, is that every one of these business owners that, that came and is participating tonight will tell you that if you're spending more money than you've got coming in, your business is not gonna last very long. And we're fortunate. We've got the advantage. We've got some protections as a public entity. We get tax money. Right? We aren't required to make a profit in order to keep the doors open and do well. But we've got some real deficits too. Because if I own a coffee shop and I need to make more money, I can tag a quarter on to the price of a cup of coffee. I may not want to do that, but I can do that and adjust how much revenue I've got coming in. But as your fire department, we have to come to you, we have to come to the voters, and we have to ask them the question. And, and what it really comes down to is, have we added enough value in your lives? Is there enough value in what it is that we provide to you, what we do, for you to support us? So the revenue stream in green looks like it looks there. And we are significantly impacted by two events. The mayor mentioned one, which was the Gallagher amendment. And we believe that the Gallagher hit is not gonna be nearly as bad as we thought it was, but it's still gonna represent about a quarter of a million dollars in revenue loss for us. Now, the good news is that the projections for assessed value compensated for the hit that we believed we were gonna take. The fire district is actually gonna recover just a little bit. We're gonna get about $100,000 more in revenue than we did last year. But last year's hit, we haven't compensated for, which was oil and gas. And I think that you're all aware. I know the county government certainly is aware of the significance of that hit. For us, it was $460,000 from our revenue stream, and that's in a total of about an $11 million budget. So it's a really significant number. And one of the things that I think business owners would also tell you is if you're living beyond your means, if you're spending more money than you've got coming in in revenue, then you better tighten your belt. And we've been a tight one. Since 2010, we've been tightening our belt. I promise you that paperclips and pencil erasers are no longer in any of our budgets. We've cut our training budget to the point where we, we rely mostly only on in-house training, which is dangerous, because you don't get the influx of national attention and best practice and things like that. We've reduced the amount of staffing that we had. We had layoffs in one year. And we've done everything that we can to tighten our belt. But I'll, I'll also represent to you this, that there's a point at which you tighten your belt to the point where it cuts you in half. And for us, that representative line is that 2016 year where from '16 to '17, we lost a significant portion of our revenue stream. And at the same time, you see the red line on this chart climbing away from us. As our revenue stream declined, our call volume increased, and increased, and increased. Here's some interesting charts. And these have been revamped from the ones that you saw last week. At the left, you see for 2010 through '16, how many calls we ran in, I guess it's in 200 call increments there. And the, the orange, or I suppose they're orange dots at the bottom are calls that occurred in the county, and the blue ones are calls that occurred in the city. To the right is a representative chart the same way. So pick whichever one you want. But this shows basically the same thing, and that is that approximately 70% to 72%, 73% of our total call volume across that entire area that we cover occurs within the city of Durango. And I went on and on last week, you'll recall, about the fact that my responders don't answer the call by wondering, "Was this a city call or a county call?" They wonder, "Who's the closest resource that can help, and how can we get there the fastest?" That's the job that we do. These factors don't matter to us. However, financially, from a governance standpoint, I've got to stand before you and I've got to point out the differences, or else I wouldn't be doing my job. So, I want you to understand that. As we created these charts, an unintended consequence kind of emerged. And it's represented on the chart on the left with that dotted blue line. And I want you to take a look, because the chart clearly shows as the orange dots go across from left to right, that's representative, and each one that goes higher is an incline in the number of calls that occurred in the county. And at the top, the blue ones represent, as they go across from left to right, an increase in the calls that occurred in the city. And I want you to compare the slope of those two. So the bottom is showing you how quickly our call volume is increasing for all of our district. And the top is showing you how quickly the call volume is increasing within your constituency or the city of Durango. This just is representative of how our funding streams come together to provide the service that, that we give. Don't think there's anything new on this chart to, to show you. And then, I guess, the crux of my conversation is that we're here tonight to ask you to consider putting a question on your ballot that says, "Will you allow taxes to be increased by about $1.3 million, a factor of two, an equivalency of 2.5 mils times your assessed value to support fire and EMS services within the city of Durango?" In clarification of the question asked earlier, it is not our intention to have dissimilar mil rates in, in our district and in the city. And so if we, we actually contemplated what we thought we were dealing with, two questions and some caveats there, we were dialing back and forth on how many actual permutations of that there were. You know, what if, what if the, the district says yes, but the city says no? What if the city says yes, but the district says no? Or what if, what if the, the district will raise the deal, but they don't want us to contract with the city? Or, you know, there's, there's a million different things. And so, as you pointed out this morning, it does get very complicated. And, and it's our job, the city managers and mine, to try to figure out how we can represent this to you, to my board, in a way that makes sense. And then, more importantly, have you, the city council and the fire board walk forward and represent this to your constituency, to the voters, to get them to recognize the value associated with supporting the fire district. Here's what the numbers look like. The 2018 preliminary assessed evaluations for our community within the fire district, that heart of La Plata County that comes down through the middle, everything from Cobain Pass down to Bondad, $450, or $543 million in value. The city of Durango concurrently $550 million. So currently, our revenue stream is within the fire district at those assessed values. Be $3,097,000 from the fire district and $3,135,000 from the city. This is disinclusive of the $272,000 a year you contribute annually for our capital. The next is the proposed amount that would be collected at 8.2 mils or with an addition of 2.5 mils. So that would be $4.4 million in the county, in our district, and $4.5 million in the city of Durango. And so the difference, or the representative amount that the tax question would have on it for the city of Durango would be, would you vote to increase taxes within the city of Durango by $1.375 million in support of fire and EMS services? Or to pay contractually for fire EMS services? Or to allow for the council to contract? Or however the verbiage goes. Also, I think important, and Ms. Marbury referred to this earlier, in residential construction, you pay taxes based on 7.2% of what's assumed to be the, the actual value of your property. And then that amount, $14,400 if you own a $200,000 home, is multiplied by 5.7 mils, or thousands. And you end up paying, at the current rate, $82.08 per year for fire EMS service availability at your home. If we went to the 8.2 mils, that would go up to $118.08 a year, or an increase of $36. If your home was worth $400,000, which I believe that... which I believe the median value of homes within the city of Durango is probably somewhere just above that, um, you are assessed or you're, you're taxed based on assessment of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred times five point seven mils is a hundred sixty-four dollars a year. And this initiative would increase that by seventy-two dollars per year. Uh, so in total, the district would be paid two hundred thirty-six bucks. The other thing that you need to know, and this is specific to the city of Durango, is that, uh, the city is already paying through the general fund five point seven mils worth of that. And so the cost factor where it shows the increase would be the total increase amount going specifically toward fire and EMS. Now, arguably, the other two point five mils that are collected are part of the general fund as well, and you could rectify or justify that any way you chose. But city voters, you'd be looking for the, the median level home at four hundred thousand dollars, you'd be looking at each person that lives in your city contributing seventy-two bucks. Now, based on what the mayor said about the, the, uh, about the way the taxation is placed, it's a different story for business owners. And this, this, I believe, was at the root of why we had so much trouble passing the other ballot issues that we introduced before that failed. And this is that, um, the assessed value, um, is, is taken from the, the assumed real value, and then that is multiplied by twenty-nine percent. And so in contrast to the residential market where you're taxed at seven point two percent of your, your real value or your assessed value of your home, the, the, uh, the commercial rate is twenty-nine percent. So as Mr. Mayor alluded to, four times the amount that you pay for residents. We thought too that it would probably be, uh, a moot point to introduce two hundred thousand and four hundred dollar commercial property because I, I don't know that there's a lot of that. I, I don't even know that there's a lot of folks living in Durango that live in two hundred thousand dollar homes. So we looked at a five hundred thousand dollar valued property, and we looked at a million dollar valued property because I think those are, you know, depending on what kind of business you're in, that's probably maybe a median rate. And so currently, that half a million dollar business is paying eight hundred twenty-six dollars. Uh, and, and again, I'd point out that currently, that half a million dollar valued property is having eight hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty cents paid for them by you, the city council, through your general fund. And this initiative would add three hundred and sixty-two bucks, which would come from them, not from the general fund. For the million dollar property, the change is seven hundred twenty-five dollars. So a great question that the city manager or, or the city attorney or somebody on the phone asked me today is, what the heck are you guys going to do with this money? How can we sell this? What makes this of value? And there's really three initiative areas that we've got to address. I said before that we're living beyond our means. I said before that we tightened our belt to the point where we made cut in half. And I said before that we can't get the phone to stop ringing at the nine-one-one center. So we don't get a choice about how many requests for service we get. We don't get a choice about how many cups of coffee it is that we could sell. And so the three areas that we dreadfully need to address are, look like this. I mentioned before that in each of the past four years, I've had to go to my board of directors and explain to them that although we've cut everything out of the budget we can possibly see fit to cut and still provide the level of service you've asked me to maintain, I need some extra money because my revenue stream does not come to a balanced budget for how much money I think it's going to take me to do that. And so in this year, uh, this budget year that we're in, I borrowed four hundred and sixty thousand dollars from our savings in order to provide operations to our community. Now, you all know, and some of us have bigger savings accounts than others, you guys don't want to see mine, but that is, there, there is, there is a significantly diminishing return on continuing an operational practice like that. At some point, our savings runs out. That savings wasn't accumulated for operations, it was accumulated by the city of Durango and by our former agencies that all came together to form Durango Fire Protection District in the name of replacing capital projects, to buy fire trucks, to replace firehouses. And so we're using it for the wrong things, but we're using it out of necessity. And we've got to fix that. So that's the first initiative, four hundred sixty thousand in this year. I'm going to project that we're, we're going to need somewhere in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars to keep on doing that, add it to our revenue stream, so I don't have to borrow from savings, so I don't have to borrow from the fund balance. The second thing that we've got to do is that as our call volume increases, more and more frequently, all of our units get used up and there's none available. And we've reached a point where we've saturated the capacity for our volunteer members to come and help us. And by that, I mean this, because I, I don't want you to think for a second that I'm representing that they're not of great value to us and that they aren't, aren't worth every bit of having them around. But here's what happens. They all have to work a job, they've all got to survive. And I don't know how many employees you have, but imagine a, a, an environment that looks like this. I work for you and your business. And two or three or four times a day during that workday, I come to you and ask if I may leave to go answer a call duty, to go on an EMS call that happened right down the street or a fire call that's happening up in the North Anamis Valley. There's only a short period of time that you're going to put up with that before you say, absolutely not. During the time that you're working for me, you're, you're not leaving. Interestingly enough, our contract with our, our husbands and our wives is very similar. There's only a certain amount of equity I've got in getting up from my kitchen table, eating dinner with my family, to go to the fire department. And so we really tried to limit those opportunities where we asked the volunteers to respond to the most dire cases where they're needed. And they look like this. When we have a downtown fire burning and it takes a hundred people to put it out, we need their help. When the next door neighbor's having a heart attack and they can get there in two minutes when it's going to take the ambulance maybe ten minutes to get there, we need their help. And when we go out to, to flood the community so that we can spread the message of, of fire safety and we can educate the public about what they should and shouldn't do in our community to keep them safe, we rely on that volunteer staff. That's what those guys do for us. Now, having said that, there also is a limit to the amount of calls that a career crew can take. They come to work, they work forty-eight hours at a time. They come to work this morning, they work all day today, all night tonight, all day tomorrow, all day, all, all night tomorrow night, and they get to go home then. They're at work for two days straight, and then they get off, and they're off for four days straight. That's the way that their work schedule works. So it takes three full shifts of them to have twenty-four seven coverage. When we're asking the downtown fire station, as an example, to run eighteen hundred calls a year, and it takes them at least an hour to handle every call, not because each call takes an hour, but because even if they go out and pick up a kid with a bloody nose whose mom isn't around, so somebody's got to take care of them. They then have to take them all the way out to the hospital, transfer the patient to the hospital, fill out their report, and get back to their district. This is risky because what happens is that when the ambulance isn't at that downtown fire station and somebody has a heart attack, we've got to call the next one. So in our system, that would be coming from Bondad, I'm, I'm sorry, not Bondad, from Boto Park, or that would be coming from our Station Three, which is out near County Road two fifty, off, off of Thirty-Second Street. So it's a great deal longer that those people have to wait for the ambulance to get there. And if the first call is not as significant and the second call is very significant, we don't have any way to forecast that. So when you call, we come. Now, when we get three D, all the ambulances in the central part of La Plata County are being used up. And for that fourth call, do you know where our ambulance comes from? If I'm having a heart attack today on Main Street and three other calls are going on, I'm waiting for an ambulance to come from the ski area. And that's the way our system works. It, it, it's a risk management system. We spread the resources out the best that we can. We try to calculate all those risks and all, all of what's going on. But the bottom line is, the only way that we can compensate for that is add more resources to the pool. And so the second initiative that this mill rate is going to change is it's going to allow us to have operational money to add staff. And they're not cheap. Those, those twenty-four hundred pounds worth of gorillas in the back of the room, they're, they don't come inexpensively. It's the same as your budget with the city. The, the people are the most expensive elements in, in the system. And so it costs us about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to add a three-person crew that can cover a station in an area. And so based on that, we anticipate the need to go from a crew size every day on duty of eighteen responders that are, that are being paid, that are there for that forty-eight hours, up to a staffing level of twenty-five responders. And that would allow us to open another fire station and have fire engine and ambulance staffed service out of that and bolster the staffing that we have so that each other station, with the exception of the one farthest north, would have a fire truck crew and an ambulance crew available to respond. So from four locations within this core area of La Plata County, right around the city, you would have ambulance and a fire truck available. The last thing that we've got to do is that we've got to fix our revenue stream when it comes to starting to address some capital needs. And I know that when you tell firefighters about new fire trucks, we get really excited. But when you tell the general public about fire trucks, that's not that exciting at all. And if you tell my wife about a new fire truck, she's going to fall asleep before you get the sentence said. So the, the deal for us is that, I've represented to you before when we've talked about impact fees, that I believe with a, a sound program of impact fees, we could take care of about twenty-four percent of our future capital needs for the next thirty years. Well, that leaves seventy-six percent of our capital needs to be paid for by the current constituency. And if you look at that from the standpoint of our capital improvement plan exists and encompasses about fifty-four million dollars worth of value, and seventy-six percent of that divided by that thirty-year window means that we ought to be putting away one point three million dollars a year to address capital needs. That's new bricks and mortar for fire stations, renovations, new buildings, and that is replacing those fire trucks, okay? Now, if you're doing the math in your head, four hundred sixty thousand dollars plus a whole bunch more than that for personnel, plus one point three million dollars a year, what you're going to find is that two point five mils doesn't cover that. And, and I'm standing before you today, making a presentation saying, I'm presenting you something that doesn't fully cover our needs. But I'm doing that because I believe our community deserves to have a, a conservative approach taken with the way that we handle taxation. Nobody wants new taxes, I certainly don't want new taxes. And I damn sure don't want to be the guy whose name is on asking our community for new taxes. But here I am, and I'm your fire chief, and I've told you what we do for this community. And so I'm asking you to support this. Two point five mils will get us a good start. It's a conservative approach and a level that our board is comfortable with in saying, we need the community's support. Give us this little bit extra and we'll do everything we can to try to bolster our coverage. And just like you, we're going to hope that our assessed values increase, and we're going to hope that you as a city do extremely well, and nobody buys anything on Amazon, sweetie.
Thank you.
And we're able to get, um, some, some increased revenue. But I think that this is a sound approach to a conservative effort to raise taxes only at the amount that we need for these specific initiatives. And this will assure that we've got great fire and EMS service into the future for our community. I, I'd love to answer any questions that you may have.
Chief, I would have one question, uh, just because this refers back to, uh, Mr. Harper's remarks. Uh, this capital improvement plan you're talking about is for everything but the station number two.
We actually took Station Two and some other identified existing needs off of the capital improvement plan when it comes to how we calculated our, our request for impact fees. And I don't want to get into a long discussion about impact fees because it's for another day. But, um, but our, our organization has actually done really well. Um, when the agencies came together, all of the fund balances from Anamis, from Mosso Cliffs, and, and actually the capital contribution from the city of Durango is partially going to that, right? So we've got a savings account that we've got some money in. Now, just like everybody else, we've got to use a little bit of that money to be able to operate. All of our tax money doesn't come in at once. So we keep about a million five in an account so that we can write payroll checks and so that we can buy hose in an emergency fashion if something happens and we need hose all of a sudden, or, or turnout gear, SCBA. So that's kind of reserved. We also reserve an amount for future capital. And our board has seen fit to take five million dollars of our capital reserves and apply it toward capital purchases. And that's reserved along with the impact fees from Edgemont that are specifically spelled out need to be spent in the Edgemont district. It's also specifically reserved with the money that comes from the city of Durango that's earmarked for the Station Two project. So in, in saying, while this is not that, so, some of, some of the money I'm talking about could eventually go toward, as an example, a payment on our new downtown fire station. But that's not why we're asking.
But this primarily is for your other capital.
The Station Two project is separate from this question and is something that we will very likely do regardless of the outcome of this question because it's so badly needed.
I think, I think it is important, uh, for this conversation to understand that for all, all of the complications that arise with Station Number Two, that's not part of this request to, you know, except in this, you know, in the small ways that you might just mention.
In, in the same way that you can't say that none of what you pay me five point seven mils wise comes from property tax.
Exactly, yeah.
It all goes into our general fund and then it gets paid out as the bills get paid. But this, this is not earmarked for that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you, chief. I think we're already five minutes past our nominal, uh, end for this, uh, time, but, um, it, this is a very important issue for our community. So I want to make sure that anyone else who wants to speak to it has the opportunity.
Seeing none, I will close this hearing and seek commentary from my colleagues. And what we need to do out of this is provide direction to staff.
Well, I'll, I'll open a little bit with the, um, request on the two point five mils relative to the fire district. Um, you know, this issue, and we've been the beneficiaries of many presentations by chief. You always do an exceptional job of illuminating that issue and, uh, appreciate the needs that you have. And thanks for the tours of, uh, Station Two in particular. Uh, I think we all as a body understand the needs, uh, that they're genuine and compelling and that, uh, the real issue here relative to whether the, uh, voters in their good wisdom also see that compelling mention, message as a reason to pay more taxes is that there's a fairness equivalency, uh, if the city is participating in a different way. And so I can't imagine a circumstance under which, um, the needs are not achieved by our failure to participate if the voters agree to participate in increasing their property taxes, which by the way are, are low across the spectrum of property taxes in, in most of, uh, of the entire region and beyond. Um, so, you know, I would just want to say that I'm in support of creating a circumstance that is, uh, creating that equivalency and fairness in our taxation and the payments that the city makes to this. I think that the only thing that I, you know, is troubling that is the news relative to our charter that by doing so even with our current obligation and the current agreement, that those eleven years would essentially eliminate our, um, bonding capacity initially. But, uh, I was glad to hear that the suggestion from the chief that we might be able to buy that down, uh, year after year is encouraging. We'll recoup that in a relatively quick fashion, actually. Our, our debt repays after, our, our agreement is eleven years long. So, um, you know, I'm in favor of, of supporting the two point five mils increase, uh, relative to that. And then the other issue, uh, to me, uh, as we've seen it, just based on this bonding capacity, we don't have the opportunity here to extend our agreement. Uh, it takes off the table our ability to consider the fire station location as a component of that agreement. Um, and so I think we would have to direct the staff to, um, table that to, uh, renegotiate how we're going to approach helping the fire, uh, the fire district pay for that and do that in the future, so.
All right, um, so the question then on your, your...
All right, um, so the question then on your, just to follow up on what you just said, um, Council of Patine, is then that the ballot question then wouldn't have any discussion of the location of the property at all?
I don't think it would because we can't extend our agreement relative to the ability to tie those two things together. And, and that I think those things are intrinsically tied together. We can't, uh, we can't, uh, give away the land of our, our, our community into that program without the assurance that we have a long-term agreement. Uh, although, you know, another deal can be struck. I just don't, we've heard tonight that it probably can't be struck within the weeks' time that we have to complete it. The complications are too much, uh, to go through. But, you know, we do have to, uh, come to terms with the language up there, mill levy relative to the city's obligations.
Um, okay. I, um, have been wanting and asking for a comprehensive plan, one that looks at all of our needs over the long term for our city for, you know, as long as I've been on council and, so that I, so that we could understand the implications um, of using some of, of, of using our debt service for this purpose. Um, and I very much agree with the, um, discussion that, um, Chief Doughty was saying that, um, while we have the discussions on higher and best use of that property, there is absolutely a, um, uh, high public use, um, that we're talking about here. And given that, um, despite the fact that I don't feel I have a full understanding of the implications of taking over half of our debt capacity to fund, um, this initiative. Um, but given the importance of fire and safety and rescue to our community, my, um, vote would be to let the people decide and let them make that decision. I've, um, and let, let them have that opportunity to, to make a decision on whether they want to use their tax opportunity to pay for that. Um, I think that with the extension and what we learned tonight, if we take the table, I, I'm much more comfortable taking the discussion of the location off. And so we just look here for funding this, for this purpose. If the community wants to fund this purpose first. And then over the next year, we slowly look at locations and do as some of our community has suggested to us, a more thorough analysis of properties within that heat zone or heat study, whatever you call it. Um, so I would also be in favor of putting the 2.5 mil levy increase on the ballot.
Well, I have been always in favor of putting the 2.5 mils on the, the ballot. I think that's very reasonable for staffing, for trucks, for training. Uh, we all know that Station 2 is, um, in need of change. So I'm not quite sure I'm hearing you guys. You guys are saying you want to put a question that says that, to the city of Durango, that, uh, you're asking the residents to raise their mill levy by 2.5 to pay our share of the fire department. Okay, that's a funding issue. All right? And nothing about you want to wait and have more discovery, more information from the chief about a location?
Later. Right, yeah. We don't have enough time, I don't think, to do that right now. I think we have a time limitation. I think we have important questions we have to answer before we can focus on our particular site. Um, and I think that the community is going to need to make that decision on funding, like you suggested, um, and, um, without a determination of exactly where that will be located. Because we have way too many questions to answer, um, like many people brought up in our studies, in our sessions, open sessions. Um, and I think that also with the new, in, in particular with the news of our inability to extend the contract, we have to work through those details. I think they're significant. We can't do it in a week.
I, I agree. Not, it seems really rushed to me to try to make everything work. But my question for the city attorney, can, after talking to Mr. Weiser then, there could be ballot language set up that the city council could approve that said, um, do you want to increase your city property tax by 2.5 mils, which would amount to 1. million something or another? In order to do what? To pay our share of the fire department?
Yeah, in fact, I was just jotting some notes on a potential motion here, yeah. Um, and, and I don't want to jump the gun and do that. But I think that, I'll tell you what I have come up with or what I'm hearing. And I haven't, we haven't heard from everyone, certainly. Uh, but yes, I think that the possible action here would be to, uh, increase taxes within the city by 2.5 mils. Increase the rate under the service contract to the equivalent of an additional 2.5 mils over and above the 5.7 that's currently being paid. So we would raise it to the equivalent of 8.2. Um, we would authorize the term of the contract to be the maximum term, term allowed under the charter. I think that's important because we have to get the numbers together, um, to make sure that we can go the 11 years and pledge the mill levy. So I think that that's a calculation we have to engage in in the next day or two. And then that would be contingent on a similar approval of a mill levy increase by the fire district. So those are the four elements of that that I see that are critical for the ballot question. And, and I think we would be leaning toward asking it as one question.
Yes, I, I like the one question. And I think what you said is easy enough for my next door neighbors to understand. You know, we, we've dealt with it, read it, slept with it, talked about it. You know, we, we get it, but it's the people who are voting that have to get it.
Yeah.
So I, I, I like what you just said.
And, um, I concur with, with, uh, what my fellow counselors have been saying. There are other implications of this. Uh, I, I found over the last couple of weeks, uh, I was having a knot in my stomach around rushing into the decision about a location for the site. And I've learned in some years, uh, that's, that's not a good way to go into a major decision. Uh, I think, uh, citizens have made, you know, we didn't hear from a lot of people, but they made compelling arguments, and we've heard it from others as well, to say, we really need to step back and have the community conversation about the site for a fire station. Uh, I happened to have lunch today with the, uh, with Chris Euler, the chair of the Business Improvement District, and said, you know, we need to look at this bigger picture of, you know, there, the, the idea of, of an events, convention slash event center has really gotten, seems to have, have gotten some new life. Um, that would be a wonderful outcome for our city. So we've got two, two facilities to site. And in fact, one of the reasons I, as I explained last week, one of the reasons why I was leaning towards the railroad site was because the other, the other choosing the River City Hall site displaces city staff and we really don't have a home for them. And it's going to cost a lot of money just to, just to fix it up some other place. Uh, so the costs, you know, the opportunity costs for, what are the, what are the other dominoes that are falling here? What are we, we, what might we be preventing ourselves from doing? What are we forcing ourselves to do? That's a big conversation. And, uh, it's potentially additional millions of dollars of public money that have, we have to figure out how to do it. Uh, we have to figure out how to finance the station. And the original plan, we were thinking of extending the contract with new terms that would fold into the financing of a site, of a fire station on a specific site. The other site has a different cost structure. Uh, that, at the very least, that conversation got us to here. Uh, and I think that's a plus. We've learned we have some serious constraints about the city's debt capacity. Uh, we have long-term concerns about who owns the fire station and what is the relative positions of the city and the fire district as we renegotiate that contract in the future. Uh, one of our interests was to make sure that the city had some leverage. We don't want to put yourself, put ourselves completely at the mercy, well, you own the building and, and the land and, oh, please provide fire service. Uh, you know, clearly the, the chief made, chief's presentation made very, very clear the commitment of the fire district to the safety of our community. But public safety, I have said in other contexts, is job one for municipal government. Uh, we have to have a, a high, highly functioning police department. We have to have a highly functioning fire department. We have some serious community conversations to have about where, where we're going to put a fire station, uh, how, how we're going to pay for it and what the relationship between the city and the fire district is going to look like in the future. Really, uh, these are not simple issues as we found out, uh, which is why trying to get, get it done in such a short period of time, uh, was already daunting. But I think we've got a temporary solution. We've got, uh, I think that slide says it all and the numbers that the, uh, the chief attached to it. We need our fire district to be able to do these things. And, uh, I have reserved in the back of my head, uh, from the mayor in the month of October to articulate this to the citizens of Durango to support this. So I would look, look for a motion from, uh, one of my colleagues to direct staff to...
Prepare an ordinance?
Prepare an ordinance that would raise a mil, two and a half mils, uh, adjust our contract with the EFPD, allow the term to, um, be the maximum under, that we can under the charter and be contingent on the, uh, passing of the mill levy by DFPD. If I got the notes from, if I got Mr. Nelson's, uh, correctly, so.
I'll make that motion.
I'll do it. Go ahead.
Second. Hey, we have a roll call.
Council of Patine?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor P. Tim Mellerberry?
Yes.
Mayor what?
And before I vote, um, it's implicit that that's for next week's meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
And then, uh...
And if, and if that's a problem, we will indeed probably have to schedule some special meetings. Or, or maybe one. But I think this should be straightforward enough that we should be able to get this together by next week.
And then we would look to, uh, the staff and the chief to work together to continue on this, um, this, with the new fire station.
And, uh, you know, and those are tough conversations. Um, I would second, uh, Councilor Youssef's, uh, concern that we have, you know, we've got a lot of fiscal needs. I think public safety's got to rise to the top of that. But we also have to figure out how to, how do these funding mechanisms play in? To the extent that we commit our debt, debt capacity towards, um, fire services, we are constrained on addressing other, using that mechanism for meeting other fiscal, fiscal needs. Um, stay tuned. And thank you for your attention. The time is 6:22 and I'll adjourn the meeting.
Another ballot item.
We do indeed.
Other, other property taxes.